Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. This is February 18th, Tuesday meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We usually don't have such a packed audience, so it's nice to see you guys here. Commissioner comments, first thing on the agenda? Smile. Any Commissioner comments from anybody else?
I would just like to commend Mayor Ushuretti and President Myers for the letter to the editor in tonight's newspaper, talking about the long and proud history of working together to ensure our community and campus are great places for all citizens and students to feel welcome and call home. And this is an important time for that message, and so I commend them for that, and then the timing.
Thank you. Wen? Okay, alright. Nothing from here either, except enjoy the beautiful weather. I think it's going to start snowing here in a little bit. There's a lot of things also still going on in our community, so hopefully you have a chance to enjoy those as well. There's been a lot of bills introduced in the Kansas Legislature, so please follow what's going on. There's a lot of things that happen really, really quick. Keep updated. I don't know if you follow on social media, but the best thing you can do is be informed citizens and register to vote. Things are going to be happening really fast in the next few months. So with that, we'll go ahead and start our meeting. The items on the consent agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on the consent agenda items?
Item P, which is the vehicle replacement, I don't know how Davis Moore can sell their cars so cheap that they can undercut everybody's price on vehicles sold to governments across, or local governments and throughout the state, but I would like us to, if they ever get within, if local dealers ever get within 4% or 5% of the lowest bid, I'd like us to occasionally try to keep a little bit of that money in town, if possible. I saw this time, I don't think anybody's within $1,500 bucks, which is 5% or something probably, and so I don't know how they do it, but I just hate the idea that we're buying 10 or 12 vehicles and not a single one of them is being purchased in town. But I realize through the bid process, the local people won't always get the best, can't get us the best price. But if it ever gets close, I would like us to occasionally see what we could do to throw at least one of those vehicles to a local dealership, if at all possible.
Ian, I wanted to ask a question here on item M, because I know we're going to move some temporary office space over to where the Traffic Shop building is, and that's going to end up saving us about $30,000 in stuff that we're outsourcing, testing things, but which exact departments are going to be working in there?
Sharon Robb can help me here, but obviously we have traffic, electricians, inspectors, some of our inspection staff, so this would allow us to move some of our other inspection staff that deal with public works projects and inspect those projects to relocate from City Hall down to that area and create better working space environments upstairs and relieve some of our parking here with the, that was one of our strategies ultimately, was to try and improve the parking down there, as well as eventually be able to relocate more staff. So this was a great opportunity that we anticipated being able to achieve these essentially donations from the DHS for these work and office mobile units to be able to help us with that. Rob, do you want to add to that conversation?
Coming out of City Hall, it'll be three inspectors, two surveyors, project coordinator, that'll all move down there, as well as the electricians, which are already cramped. In the Traffic Shop will move out, and literally 50 feet to the west, and move into that building, and then reconfiguration inside Traffic Shop, and then reconfiguration also upstairs here in City Hall, because we got some folks that are in closets of cubicles.
Okay, I think, you know, getting these buildings at that price is a pretty good deal, especially if you're going to save $30,000. But my issue was, which is not, you know, clear on the agenda, when you look at the financing, once again, 3/4 of it is coming out of, you know, my favorite topic, the past couple of months, sewer, stormwater, and water. And it doesn't sound like any water department people are going to be in there.
Well, let me help you out. Those inspectors all inspect water, sewer, stormwater projects. They also do survey for all three of those categories as well. If we were to keep track of their time, I think you'd be surprised how much, I mean even my time spent on water, I mean I'm paid out of the general fund. Brian's paid out of the general fund. Those, all of us work on those three different categories consistently. Transportation is the only fourth component that we work on that tends to be general fund.
Yeah, I could see the transportation piece. I'm still just concerned that, you know, that water fund's an easy go-to. It almost reminds me of like, you know, the state likes to raid Capers and KDOT, you know, every time they need money. And it seems like we just keep going to that, and then I see the charts, you know, once a year where we say, "We don't have enough money in the reserve. We've got to raise the water rates. We don't have enough money to do these delayed sewer projects." And I would like to see us really put a solid clamp on, you know, let's go ahead and let that water fund build up, so that we can do these projects, and we've got a reserve, and we don't have to keep raising water rates, you know, 3% and 5% every year. And it just seems like almost, you know, most of our projects, you know, always tap into that water fund. And you can make a justification, hey, you've got people that do the code, but is that really 3/4 of the cost? And that was my only concern with that. I think, you know, getting those buildings is bang up smart and saving $30,000, you know. You know, I'm all for that, always.
With regard to item E, which has to do, Wen and I both serve on the Wildcat Creek Resiliency Committee, and I have asked the City Manager to speak to the item with regard to Wildcat Creek flooding. It's on our agenda.
So this specific item essentially is to provide for some more financing for this particular project. Their primary projects were to clean up the log jam at the bend in Wildcat Creek just south of K-18 as it turns and goes east, and then also restabilize that embankment. That was the biggest project. I think it was in the neighborhood of $700 and some thousand dollars. Then we also had exposed sanitary sewer trunk main near Home Depot that was repaired as part of that. We also had the North Wildcat Creek sanitary sewer inverted siphon that was damaged and repaired as part of this, and also a lift station at the Wildcat Creek, some repairs at that particular place. When we began those projects, some of these are grant-supported through the couple of different federal agencies, and when we asked you to give us some temporary, or approve some temporary financing for this, we capped that at $1 million. This is just to correct that. It came in a little over $1 million, so we need to amend our temporary financing for that until, because it'll be a while before we get reimbursed.
I just think it's important that each time we do something regarding flooding in this community, we bring it to the community's attention. And the US Army Corps of Engineers is already predicting a high probability of flooding, and it's mostly on the Missouri River, so far. But it doesn't take that much for this area. 2/3 of the Tuttel Creek River Basin drains from Nebraska. So we aren't in control of our own water here, and we never are, of course, but it's just we're, you know, as a public, you say, "Why aren't you doing something?" Well, we are, but it's incremental, and it's as we have the money, and all, you know, we are chipping away at it, and we are making a difference. It's what I would assure people. Thank you.
And some of it, we just don't have control over, what happens either. So any other City Commissioner questions? I'll open it up for public comment on any one of the items that are on the consent agenda. We have one speaker that is, a couple of speakers that have signed up. You can come on up. Say your name and your address, and typically have about five minutes to make your public comment. Welcome.
My name is Chad Morrow, and my family and I live in Manhattan at 421 Leavenworth Street. This evening, I'm speaking on behalf of BikeWalk MHK. We'd like to begin by thanking the Flint Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization and city staff for their development of the Bicycle Pedestrian Systems Plan, and the numerous community members for dedicating their time, energy, and engagement in this process. We'd like to convey a few points this evening that we find most pressing. First among those is to express that, as members of BikeWalk MHK, we are in support of the Bike Pedestrian Systems Plan. We also, however, understand the complex nature of the programmatic funding at the city level and the myriad of competing interests vying for dollars within a limited budget, and want to ensure future funding for this plan is implemented. Residents and the Commission need only examine the city's current plan, the plan we tonight look to revise, for an example of solid planning with poor funding follow-through. Though the current plan was adopted two decades ago, only a small fraction of it was ever implemented. Only a small fraction of the funding needed to realize the plan was ever allocated by this body. We are here this evening to prevent another 20 years wasted. We are here this evening to prevent another poor funding follow-through on a good plan. To that end, and in the interest of transparency and community engagement, we would like to see an ongoing and documented commitment to prioritizing the equitable implementation of this plan over the next decade. While this first step of adoption is of apparent importance, the subsequent step of prioritizing the plan's implementation is imperative to the well-being, safety, and healthful growth of our community. Simply put, while we continue to be encouraged by the past and current efforts to advance bike-ped infrastructure in Manhattan, we are not in support of a plan as a symbolic gesture. Rather, we need and support a comprehensive, holistically-integrated and equitably-implemented bike-ped infrastructure. And we want to see that understanding reflected in each of you as our elected officials by way of your dedicated, long-term funding follow-through to transform this good plan into good BikeWalk infrastructure. Again, on behalf of BikeWalk MHK, we would like to thank you for your time and energy on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good evening. My name is Andrew Elliott. I live at 2108 Prairie Lee Place, here in Manhattan, and tonight I want to take a moment to share some concerns that I have about the implementation of the Bike Pedestrian Systems Plan. As a proposal, the BPSP seems to be a holistically-considered, effective, and potentially equitable plan. You're going to hear a lot of my thoughts echoing what we've just heard from Chad. However, it also needs to be implemented in a political context, as you're all aware, and therefore find support amongst shareholders who may have a greater emphasis on economic development than on the equity of implementation or impact. My concern lies specifically here. The concept of equity can be approached in a number of ways. Through the lens of privilege, it can be subverted and delayed in the service of other goals, and potentially limited to being a mere talking point, divorced from any substantive value for those who suffer most from inequity within this community. Even with the best of intentions, privilege has a tendency to project its own experiences onto the world, and to interpret everything, from complex interrelated systems to granular details through its lens, from transportation infrastructure and development, excuse me, and investment, to what we think it means to ride a bike in this community. So privilege, you may say things like, "Riding a bike is a great way to be healthy and to have fun." Or, "I don't need to bike or walk, I've got a car." There are more important things to spend money on in Manhattan. And regardless of the intention, that kind of view is a product of privilege. I think most of us can recognize that. A view of equity by comparison would offer things like, "Many people can't afford to consistently maintain and drive a car. Being able to walk and bike safely in this community is necessary to be able to get to work for many people, to feed and provide for oneself and one's family, and to access, participate in, and support the community more broadly." These are therefore not just recreational activities, they're vital parts of life. Privilege tends to struggle with the idea of equity, and instead uses the language of merit. This allows those benefiting from a system, often a minority of people, to create the kind of framework to say things like, "I work hard, I've earned what I have. If other people would just work as hard, they wouldn't be struggling." That kind of view makes privilege sound justified and earned, and to some extent, that makes sense. That message also allows privileged individuals and decision-makers alike to see themselves as separate from a system, rather than benefactors of the collective efforts of everyone. However, the lived experience of individuals sitting in economically-vulnerable positions, many of whom are in Manhattan, people who work multiple jobs contribute in countless ways to profit margins and overall value of not only the economy, but to our society and communities more broadly, that tells a very different story. Namely, that the idea that merit and wealth and success, somehow these are all synergistic, that wealth and success are the products of merit. That is a myth. What's not a myth is the inequity that exists in this community. We can measure that, it's calculable, we have the data. We also have solutions that seek to effectively address this kind of disparity. The Bike-Ped Systems Plan reflects exactly this. Equity is mentioned over 30 times in the document, and thanks to the dedicated work of those that developed this plan, there seems to be a very sincere effort to realize the central role and need that equity plays in creating socially-just and sustainable economic systems. My concern specifically is that, even if unintentional, the language and views of privilege may seep into the efforts of this plan. The public is owed transparency regarding the variables and data that inform the plan's implementation categories specifically, and prioritization methods. There is too great a disparity among the members of this community to not know what the specific driving forces of decisions are, and the impact of potential change is too broad to leave in the hands of a select few voices to weigh in on. The last thing we want to find are false conflicts of interest between the voice of privilege on one hand, and the voice of equity on the other. Priorities for implementing equitable change do not have to be a false choice between the economic interests and development of Manhattan, and the well-being of this community as a whole. We can do better than that, we're way more creative than that. There's way more potential sitting up here and in this community than that idea. The BPSP has the potential to make meaningful and equitable impact on the lives of people in Manhattan, and in that, I want to urge us all to realize what the call and responsibility of equity looks like in action when we implement this idea. It compels those of us with privilege to see it as part of a whole system, a system that depends on all of us, and should similarly work for the benefit of everyone. I also want to remind those in decision-making positions that they represent all of our collective, public interests, not just a few privileged voices, all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? There's a whole lot of you. This is your time. Come on up. State your name and address, please.
My name is Lester Lashkey, and I live at 1933 Blue Stem Terrace, here in Manhattan. And I'm strongly in support of the plan that is being put forward tonight, but I also have a more mundane concern with regard to the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists in Manhattan, specifically those who take the artery between campus and north of campus on North Manhattan Avenue. So that includes college students, University, K-State students who live in the dormitories over at Claflin and Manhattan, and then also the neighborhoods at the top of Manhattan. So there's several neighborhoods over there, and there's also the retirement community. So this is a very important artery, and there is a North Manhattan multi-use trail, which is basically the name for the triple-wide sidewalk that goes from Claflin on North Manhattan all the way up to the Department of Agriculture and the Research Park. And I think that the reason why that was created was because they realized that there's a, it's a very important artery, and there's lots of traffic by pedestrians and bicyclists. And they didn't want them to be going on that hill, North Manhattan Avenue, because it's very dangerous. So I think it was a very wise decision to create that. But last year, when the construction was done in North Manhattan, started in July, and continued until it was finished for the street right around the 1st of November. So they were able to open up North Manhattan Avenue again. But they, when they tore up the street to do the construction, they also tore up the North Manhattan multi-use trail. And although they finished the construction on North Manhattan Avenue around November 1st, they have not finished the construction on the North Manhattan multi-use trail. So it is in a state of essentially being a muddy dirt path. And it has been since last July, and even though the street has been passable and in good shape since November, pedestrians and bicyclists who want to use the North Manhattan multi-use trail have to make a choice oftentimes between either walking through mud, where many of them, if they're going into campus, it's for work, or if they're coming back out of camp, out, going home from campus, they're, you know, do they want to walk through mud? Or they can walk on the North Manhattan Avenue, which is a very dangerous street. And of course, the same goes for bicyclists. Most of them don't like to ride through mud, so that, what that's doing is it's diverting a lot of pedestrian and bicycle traffic from the very safe North Manhattan Avenue multi-use trail into the very dangerous North Manhattan Hill area. And so, yeah, I would like to ask that something be done. We've been waiting for three and a half months since the street was finished to have the multi-use trail actually be passable without walking through mud. And I fear that somebody's going to be killed, either a pedestrian or bicyclist, and I think a pretty good case could be made that because the city has not finished that multi-use trail, and people don't want to walk through mud, that the city will bear some responsibility for the death of that person. And could, that could also be a legal responsibility. So I think that it's something that, you know, needs further attention.
Thank you. We'll look into that. I don't know if anybody has a, I haven't been down that street in a little while, so thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, and I sent all the City Commission members email with links to a number of photographs, and also some video showing the current state of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Any comments anymore? Oh, two people, okay.
My name is Carol Seven, and I live at 1030 Pierre Street. I just wanted to know how many of you have ridden a bike in the past year? How many of you have ridden a bike in the past year? And for the rest of you, I hope you find one before Bike Month. We have a lot of really exciting events planned. Thank you.
You can come on up.
My name's Tim Peverill, I live at 3118 Gary Avenue. And just a short comment, right now bicyclists are considered sort of a small, strange fringe element in some ways, but most of the growth in the bicycle industry is coming through e-bikes. And so I would just encourage us to be a forward-thinking community, realizing that e-bikes open up possibilities for people who are not young and fit, and people who like to show up and work not sweaty. And so that is actually quite attractive to people, young people coming to an area to find a good bike system. And some people make their decisions with that very large in their calculus. Thank you.
That's good. Well, we have a place for them if they have e-scooters, so we'll find a place for the e-bikes as well. Other comments? The teacher in me says, "Give them wait time." Okay, with that, we're going to close public comments. Any other City Commissioner comments? Yes?
I just want to thank everyone that put that Bike-Ped Systems report together, but also let you know that I think we hear you loud and clear when it comes to dedicated funding and making sure that that is on the forefront of our discussions, and that this part in this plan, as we adopt it, is not a symbolic, but actually implementing it. As, throughout here, I think this report shows us over and over again that the target population that we're trying to attract and retain in the community is interested in bikes and walking, and that is, absolutely needs to be part of our decision-making process when we go into thinking about transportation, and modes of travel, and density, and housing, and all parts of it. So I just wanted to, while you're here, and I, we could move this clear to the end so you have to sit through everything, but I wouldn't do that to you.
Yeah, I just want, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, some years ago, I was an advocate for a sidewalk along Knox Lane, out to the Northeast Park. And for 10 years, I submitted a CIP report every year, faithfully. City staff said, "Linda, you're not supposed to do that." That was before I was ever elected. But, so I know what it's like to pitch something and try to get it. Fortunately, the community development staff ended up writing a proposal for grant funding to KDOT, I think, for, I don't know who it was. Anyway, and it's a wonderful sidewalk, and we all benefit from it. I know you've been to, if you're, as cycle riders, you've been to the Northeast Park. So that's just one little piece that, you know, we all advocate for things that we, that's for the good of the community. And so I'm, I have a hip replacement, and I'm probably not riding bicycles these days. Just falling over would be disastrous. So just to say that I haven't ridden a bicycle, but I have a, I am supportive. So thank you for the work that you've put into this.
You know, I think the bike plan's a good plan. Problem's always funding, as everybody knows, and, you know, dedicated funding, I don't know if that'll come to pass, but I think everybody should be aware that whenever we, you know, retrofit a road or put one in, we're investing money in sidewalks. You can see that along Anderson Avenue, you know, out where the new circle got put in. We've got a contract putting a new bridge across Tuttel Creek Boulevard. KDOT's going to do that, and the city added, I think, close to $80,000 to the cost of that. Why? Because we're going to put a decent wide path across there, because there isn't one now, and there's a dirt trail that goes there. So I think, you know, the concern that, you know, bothers me a little bit, people say, "Well, nothing was done." I think it is being done when funds are available and we can do it, and it's always foremost in our minds. In fact, I've gotten some complaints on that bridge. People saying, "Why did you support, you know, $80,000 to go into, you know, bike lane, walk lane?" Well, because it's necessary. It'd be crazy to not do that when we're rebuilding the bridge. And so I think, you know, whenever we're doing these projects, we're trying to, you know, put those wider sidewalks on one side and make everything work. And it is unfortunate that things like linear trail, we still got, what, about eight miles to go on that, and they've been plugging away on that for many years. And I ride that on occasion. You know, one person asked if those of us up here had a bike. We've got a couple. My wife and I have a tandem, but we don't ride it that much on city streets, because it's scary. So we like the idea of... So, so we like the idea of the bike paths, where we can get out and feel like we're not going to get run over. So appreciate the work on this. And it's, you know, it's the ideal state, and we're going to try to get there. But that doesn't mean, you know, somebody can just write a check for $10 million and make it happen tomorrow. But I think we're going to get there. We're going to get there.
Yeah. And, and I'm glad Commissioner Butler and all the other commissioners have chimed in. This is something, it's easier to do when we are developing new areas, or when we have to work on new construction projects, and we can automatically look for putting in bike, bike paths and such, and make them wider sidewalks. It's in the areas that are more dense, and you need more infrastructure. You don't want to just go in there and start digging things up, because now you want wider sidewalks. That takes a little, that's more cost prohibitive, and may not be in the best interest of the community. But wherever we are developing, and that's a lot of areas in our town right now, we are looking at all of the recommendations made with the group that's in front of us, as well as things like e-scooters, and trying to think, think even more forward-thinking with more of the, what is that? The electronic automo, what can I think of them? The electronic automobiles is what I want to say, but there's a word for it, and I can't remember what it is.
Electric vehicles.
What is that?
Electrical vehicles.
Electrical vehicles. So either way, we're trying to keep up with the times, because not only is it good for our young professionals, but our youth. And what we've consistently noticed is, and as a teacher, is that the more physically actively engaged people are, the fewer physical health risks they are, and also it's good for mental well-being. So those are some of the things we are looking at. And I just wanted to say thank you for coming here this evening, and we will follow what you've given us. Thank you.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Brenda?
Mayor, ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yeah, I still have concerns about the, you know, use of water fund for M., but, you know, the buildings trump that, so, yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. With that, first item on the general agenda is to consider first reading of an ordinance rezoning 922 Riley Lane from R2 to family residential district to I3 light industrial district. Chad Bunter is our presenter, is our Assistant Director for Community Development.
Good evening. If you wouldn't mind, maybe I'll pause a moment and let the...
Yes.
Room, I would, I would imagine they're not all here for this rezoning item, so...
I know. Please stay.
Okay, if it's all right, I'll get going then.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commission. I'm Chad Bunter, the Assistant Director of Community Development, and I will provide the overview of this rezoning request from its current zoning of R2 to family residential to the I3 industrial district. You have the complete memo, staff memorandum, that was presented to the planning board two weeks ago in your packet. I'll just give a quick, not quick, but a highlight of the major findings. We did present this item to the planning board, as I said, and they found in a 5-0 vote to deny, to follow staff's recommendation, to deny the request. The item, the property we're looking at is this one outlined here. It's a 15,000 square foot piece of property south of the railroad tracks, south of Fort Riley Boulevard, 10th Street, to give a little orientation, Potawatomi and Soldier and Truth Parks here, Howie's Recycling Center is there, and then the community gardens are to the east. On the site, which gains access from Riley Lane, which is a named alley for all intents and purposes, it does not conform to any of our current street widths or designs, but it is a named way that gives access to these lots here. It is a single-family home. According to the applicant, it's been vacant for, for many years, and has fallen into disrepair, and the applicant has proposed to rezone it to industrial, to redevelop the site. Closer look here. And an image of the home that's, the building that's there. Again, a broader area, as you can see, it's directly south of the Union Pacific Railroad, and then the industrial and commercial service areas along Fort Riley Boulevard. But I will point out, and this was a significant factor in staff's findings, is that it is not only adjacent to this heavy, intense, non-residential use, but across the 15, or 17-foot-wide public roadway to a number of single-family homes. And all these, all the sites are currently zoned R2, with the one exception of this one property zoned I3, the industrial zone, which in our limited research, or our research, was really a holdover for what that existing business is when we rezoned the whole area and developed the spot in town. And then lastly, the comprehensive plan shows it as residential low to medium density, and all the industrial and non-residential uses would stay to the north of the railroad track. So real quick, staff's recommendation to the planning board, and then who accepted it, as their recommendation to you, is that although there is that impact to the adjacent, to the property from the adjacent railroad track and the industrial or non-residential use to the north, that does not warrant the reasoning, reasoning to rezone the site and bring that heavy non-residential use further into this established neighborhood. The site would have to gain access from a narrow roadway, and that there are still viable residential, viable residential use for the site. It's large enough that it could handle up to four single-family homes, or some duplexes, so a total of four dwelling units on the property. And that any, any impacts that this property would see, receive by bringing that transitional zone further to the south of Riley Lane would just cause more impact on the rest of the established neighborhood. If the city commission is, understands that, that impact, city staff would recommend that a broader comprehensive look at this would be proposed, instead of a spot zoning just for this one property. But seeing what different uses could be for, proposed for the whole area through an amendment to the comprehensive plan before we got too far with that. So with that, I think I said it a couple of times over, staff recommended denial of proposed rezoning, as well as the planning board. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep.
Other questions? Any questions for Chad?
So there's no plan in place for what might be going into that spot if it was rezoned?
Um, I'll let the applicant say that. They did not provide any in the written application, but I believe at the planning board, they did mention maybe an idea, so I'll let that, the applicant respond to that.
Your turn.
Um, what would, what would be the process, or would there need to be for more high-density zoning for that lot?
Um, so I would assume resident, higher residential, it'd be the same process of a rezoning request to analyze, it's, you know, the next step up would naturally be a four-unit rezoning, or multifamily rezoning, if that would be acceptable there. We didn't look at that, just the request of the industrial zone.
You had mentioned there's potentially four...
Yeah.
But that would require a rezoning?
Actually not.
Okay.
Zoning allows for two-family residential, and the site is made up of enough land that you could create a duplex. You could create two lots and develop two duplexes. So you could get up to four dwellings on this site. Two, a duplex on two lots.
Okay, I think we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Hello, my name is Devon O'Heda. I live at 216 Carlisle Terrace. I am the owner of Big Cat Development LLC, and the person that has applied for this specific request. A lot of this got started just with what I feel was quiet and safe use for residential. It abuts the train, Howie's Trash Service, as Mr. Bunter said, to the west, there is an I3 property as well. There's been a multitude of issues with this particular property, having things dumped there. When I first acquired it, had some squatting going on at the property, I believe due to access to the railroad. It's a unique one, because on both sides, or on two sides of the property, they're zoned residential, but they weren't being used necessarily, I guess, as that. You have a church, a full-time church in the residence to the east, and the lot right next door. And then the lots to the west is, as Mr. Bunter said, I3 zoning. And then the lot in between that and 922 Riley Lane is a residential lot that was basically being used in conjunction with the business, just as a, as a parking lot, I guess. We made multiple attempts to kind of get something worked out, as far as maybe selling the property to one of the owners in the area. That didn't work out. We kind of ended up in a back-and-forth battle with Code Services, trying to get some things resolved in the area, and it's taken three years, four years, to kind of get something, I guess, figured out. What I do is I'll get properties, this one I wanted to go residential with it, I just see some safety concerns being with the track. As Mr. Bunter said, this is two R2 lots. You can put a duplex, basically an end-on-end. It's not wide enough to put the duplexes side-by-side to have access to them from the front of the property. You can only get to the property, obviously, from Riley Lane. So as a couple of the properties in the area have duplexes across the street, and then down on the corner of 9th and Riley Lane, they have access. The other two duplexes that are in the area have access from Potawatomi Avenue, and then they can get to the back of the property on Riley Lane. So the duplexes are end-on-end. You have a tenant that can get to the front of the property, and then tenants that can park to the back. If we were to go in and put two duplexes in there, there's not enough parking. You'd be having people trying to park in the same driveway to get to the back two units. Those units would be right up against the train. That's probably one of the noisiest things in town, that you can hear from just about anywhere in town. So that trumps the quiet enjoyment part of what we're looking for, obviously, the safety and the quiet enjoyment. So that got this all started for me, to look at the I3 zoning. And then two, once, you know, we always want to get along with neighbors, and when you get into a back-and-forth with any neighbor, nobody wins in that. So after doing this process, or starting this process, I realized that it could be beneficial to our specific property and one of the adjoining properties to proper, or to maybe request getting an extension of the I3 zoning, so that the two properties could be there side-by-side, and not have residential right next to I3. I think somebody, there was a question that was asked, and I can't remember what you guys were asking, Mr. Bunter.
What, any ideas what you'd try to do with it as an I3 property?
What I was looking at doing was if, if we go down on further, I do property management and rehab, so I was trying to find a way to maybe erect a building on the west side. There's two lots there. So basically where the residential property is at now, would erect a building on that side of the property, and then use the other lot for parking. If, I'd have to put a fence around it, but if the property owner to the west who has I3 could get their lot zoned I3, it would help with congestion, because basically it was being used as a parking lot, and since that's been stopped, now the cars are out all along South 10th Street, and it's put a cramp on his business. And so basically, for me to get what I want in there residential, is contradicting what he needs to do for an existing business. And then we got into this back-and-forth tiffle again, where nobody wins. So I thought if he could get his rezoned, he could have his parking lot. Mine would be I3. Again, the building would be on the west side of the property. My parking would be on the east side, which is the east lot. And then we, I would have to erect a fence between my property and the property to the east, again, which is being used as a church. Nobody lives at that property. And I feel like if it was used as a residence and somebody was living there, I don't know that I would even have proposed trying to get the I3 zoning. I didn't want to put anything specific, because when I had the community meeting, I wanted everybody to understand that there's a large veil of things that could be put on this property, chemical processing, and there's a lot of different things, I guess, similar to what Howie's looking at. But one of the other concerns, I guess, that was brought up at that meeting, is Riley Lane isn't a wide lane. It's considered a single lane, and so they didn't want any congestion. So for me to do anything with the property, there would have to be a parking lot on the east side. There's just not enough room to park any vehicles. The only other solution I had with that is if maybe they could make Riley Lane a one-way, since it is just a single lane. That might be a temporary solution. I tried to look at it from the viewpoint of the residents that live across the street, Riley Lane and Potawatomi Avenue. All of those residents' properties do not face my property, so they wouldn't be looking out their front door and seeing two businesses across the street. They also have access to their properties from Potawatomi Avenue, as well as Riley Lane. It's been a difficult one. I, I've tried a couple of different things with this one, and for me, from what I see, this seemed to be the most viable thing to try to do, and eliminate issues with any surrounding neighbors as well. So that's what I'm looking at. But again, I didn't want to get super-specific on what was going in there, because I wanted everybody, especially from the community, to understand what could possibly go in there. But my business, again, is property management and rehabbing a property, so we'd need a building to keep stuff on there. And I believe with being adjacent to a residential property, I think you have to have at least a six-foot fence where they can't see through. My building would create a barrier for the neighbor on the west property, so they, I don't believe, would have to erect a fence, at least along the boundary line, maybe across the front. I'm not 100% sure. But by putting I3 and putting a business, I would still put a tall fence along the back, and possibly a fence along in the front, just as many businesses. Where I kind of got the idea, again, McCullough Development down Riley Lane has a place where, I believe it's one of their maintenance offices, and that's kind of where I came up with the idea. They have the building on one side of the lot. I think they actually have two. They may own four lots. But they've got a building on the west side of their lot, and then a parking lot on the east part of the property that they own. So Riley Lane, again, is unique. You, you've got community gardens, there's not really development. I, I definitely understand the need for residential, but right up against a train track, and then Howie's Trash Service as well, just, and again, that's my opinion, doesn't seem like an attractive thing, you know, for somebody, again, for me to put up as a rental, and then if somebody's got children or something like that, with the train access there, it just see, didn't seem feasible. But there are businesses that are operating in that same corridor off of Riley Lane, with properties directly across the street. So anything we would put in would have to be brand-new, so it wouldn't be anything that we would be going in and having to update, I guess, or it'd have to be a sore eye of any site, as far as the looks of the building, anyway.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Do you own the property to the east of this lot?
I, I own these two lot. There's two lots there.
There are two lots?
Yeah.
In that red, in the red box?
Yeah, everything in the red box I own. The same owner owns the other two on the west side. The church owns the other two, which their house sits on the west side, and then they use the right front part as a parking lot. From what I understand, they have Sunday service there. There's usually nobody there any of the other times.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or discussion? Questions or discussion? Okay, go ahead, Mark. Okay. Any public comment? You can come on up.
Hi. My name is Linda James. I'm the lead for Tier Street. I was just wondering what happened to the community garden.
Linda, could you move your microphone up a little bit? We can't hardly hear you.
I was just, add the question of if all of this is going to be industrial-zoned, what that would do to the community garden?
The community garden would stay intact, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, this, the community garden is essentially to the east there of Ninth Street. And so this is west of that, so shouldn't have any impact on the gardens.
Commissioner comments?
The libertarian in me tells me I should, I like people to be able to do what they want with the property they own within reason. The problem is, you could set up a small-scale fish-gutting business there and then we'd really have problems, not that you would, but there's, without something specific, I'm a little nervous about that. But if the plan is just to throw up a building to store stuff in, have a small office in and park it in there, I'd be okay with that. I guess my question is, in order to override a 5-0 planning board, it has to be like four or something, right?
Supermajority. And we have to tell them the specific reason for overturning it.
For overturning it, too, so, okay. Well, yeah. So I'm going to vote for it simply because it's, I like people to be able to do what they want with their own business. And the church apparently doesn't care too much or they'd send somebody down here to complain about it. And I drove by there and those houses south of Riley Lane are far enough back that if they're not already getting a bunch of noise from the train and Howie's, I can't imagine you'd be doing anything more with that. But it's probably a moot point, but I like the idea of not regulating people out of their livelihood and such too much. But I would, I'd rather you said, you come in and said something specific, okay, I'm going to put a building on here, it's going to have a small office in it, and then I would really plug for you. But I'll vote for it simply because I don't think that's going to harm the municipal neighborhood if you stick up a building and a parking lot. But I don't think you're going to have four votes for it, so that probably doesn't matter.
And my thinking, the comprehensive land use plan, this is the future land use plan, and it leaves that, this whole area in yellow intact for residential. And, you know, sometimes property sits a little while. I can't explain why some, except maybe a train. But it is, one of the findings that the planning board uses is that the proposal has to conform to the comprehensive land use plan. And obviously, this proposal does not. So I think our community has to develop in an orderly way, and making this I-3 does, is not conducive to residential. So that's where I would come down.
I, I was very interested in seeing if this was the right spot because I wanted, I want our community and our entrepreneurs and business owners to feel like they can, they can do innovative, attempt and take risks. But, and I want to see us as a commission being more willing to make small bets in our own young business owners. I went over there today and it just, there was just so many red flags that came up that it just kind of pulled me back that this isn't the right place for that, that the street, the traffic, the, just the length of time that it was, has been residential was important to note. I think it's been residential and it, as Commissioner Morris mentioned, it's going to be in the future land use, but it's been that, it's been zoned this way since the 70s, I believe. It's just, there's just too many things going against it. And I think if we can take a step back and honor that those 13, there wasn't enough in those 13 steps to pick apart to say this is the fore, or these are the reasons why we would need to, we would be able to override that. But I appreciate your attempt and I wish you luck and I hope that property becomes more usable in the future for you.
So I sort of agree with, you know, Mark, as I looked at that property with that railroad track there. I mean, that future land lose, future land use map, you know, may be wrong. I don't know why anybody would want to live up against that railroad track, you know, just because the noise of those trains. But the infrastructure is really not there to make that, you know, I-3. I would think it would have to be more of a package deal and grab, you know, everything from the church over to make it work. And I'd like to see that, you know, perhaps happen. I'm not sure it can ever be developed as residential. I mean, I wouldn't be attracted to want to live there myself, just based on what's there. And I've always, you know, generally, you know, supported any changes to zoning, but only if all the neighbors agree. And I don't know what the residents on the, on the other side of that, you know, how they feel about it. And so I'm not big on changing, you know, zoning, simply because if everybody agrees 100% on all sides, I have no, no problem with it. But I think this, this needs more exploration. I'd like to see that developed, you know, having a vacant house there and, you know, just a lot doesn't do the city or anybody any good. So I hope in the future we could do something with it, but, but I don't think there's enough there right now.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, one of the things I tossed around was tabling this because that, we created a new problem in the congestion on the road there by the, going down this track. So that lot that was mentioned sitting in between your two properties is, has functioned as a parking lot for that business. And there is potentially a proposal coming to make that I-3. So I don't know if that makes more sense than if that is a package deal. But one option we do have is a table. Is that correct?
It is correct. I think you'd have to give a substantive reason for tabling. It's not likely that this applicant could work with the other one to amend his, he'd have to start over if they were going to join him. So I'm not sure what the purpose of tabling would be.
Yeah, so I think it's, I looked at the planning board's decision and read what was in our packets as well. And I appreciate you trying to develop something there. I'm probably going to vote against it this evening and go with what the planning board had suggested, recommended, as well as our city staff. But I don't want to close the door on this. I hope our city staff and you and other area, business owners can come up with something there. That is a residential area, but at the same time, we don't want it to just not be anything, whether you're going to build another house or something of that sort. I don't know what might be compatible there. I did drive by there. It didn't seem, it didn't seem like you can do too much there. But I would like to see you move forward and be proactive and not let this be the dead-end place. I think there is potential and we certainly want to see more, more information. There wasn't enough for us to put our hands around to say yes, that's what we want to say, whether it's, I don't know, any kind of, and anything that goes in the light industrial zone is what we were looking at. But there wasn't any kind of a real plan. So hopefully there is. And I, like I said, I don't want this to be the dead-end zone. I hope this is a restart for that area and to look at all of the options that should go there. Because otherwise, it's just dead space. And we also want it to not be just dead space in that area, so.
Mayor? And I don't know how much money you got in that, in that property now, but that's, seems like the kind of property that Habitat for Humanity would, even though I know it's crap with the, with the train behind it there, but if they could build two duplexes front-to-back, I don't know if, if you need a tax deduction, if you could, if you don't have a bunch of money in it, since apparently you got it on a tax sale or something, it might be a better deal to donate it to Habitat for Humanity, take a tax deduction and move on to your, spend your energy on your next effort. But just, just the idea, unsolicited, do with it what you will.
And even with the church there, there might be ideas to do something with the church there as well. So I'm not sure what all that might look to, but like I said, I hope there are more ideas coming forward for that area. Is that Brenda? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have an ask for a motion yet. I'm just moving forward.
Mayor, I move that the city commission accept the urban area planning board's recommendation and deny first reading of an ordinance rezoning 922 Riley Lane and approximately 0.34 acre tract generally located 100 feet east of the intersection of South Tenth Street and Riley Lane on the north side of Riley Lane from R2 to family residential district to I-3 light industrial district based on the findings in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now Brenda.
I asked just to make a comment before you vote, which is if you are voting and, based upon your comments, if you're voting in support, if you could state that what you're basing your vote in support upon, that might be based upon the findings, that would be it. If you vote against, then your statement against needs to be in the context of which of, that you don't agree with the findings or what aspect of the 13 findings that you disagree with. This isn't like a normal legislative item. We are in a quasi-judicial capacity. And so your vote has to be based upon the factors that are before you. So if you need to take a minute or whatever, but it doesn't have to be a detailed statement, but if you can give some indication in the, in the, some indication in the context of those findings as to why, what you disagreed with.
If you disagree.
Yes, if you agree and you're basing it on the findings of the staff report, then that's your statement. And state anything else you, you based your agreement upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that clear to everybody?
Well, yeah, but I got to come up with one.
Yeah, I have.
I think the criterion. It keeps going and going.
Doesn't make any difference. I'll vote, I'll vote for it.
Okay, there you go. Did you already call the roll?
It goes on for pages.
Okay.
Commissioner Butler?
Okay, yeah, I'm going to accept, yes, the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board's recommendation because for two reasons. Generally, I don't want to see anything rezoned unless everyone around it agrees. And then secondly, this would have to be more comprehensive to work. It would have to be a larger I-3 area and the infrastructure would need to be put in place to support it. And it's not there now.
Commissioner Morris?
I am voting to support the denial. And I am depending on the rationale in the staff report with regard to the golden 13 And the only way I could see that this could be developed is at a, in a future comprehensive land use plan as, so that, you know, if a, if further industrial area is needed or some other future. But as things stand now, I don't, I can't get to the point of accepting the proposal.
Commissioner Haddasal?
I vote against denying the rezoning because of item number three, the zoning and land uses of nearby properties makes me think it could be rezoned to that zone, to that zoning.
Commissioner Esterbrook?
I support the denial of the, I support the Manhattan Area Urban Planning Association's recommendations, specifically the fourth, where the subject remains suitable for uses which are presently restricted.
Mayor, ready?
Yes, I support the denial as well from the planning board and staff recommendations. I think being in a residential area, try to find something more suitable and conducive to the residents there as well.
I might just add that when a recommendation comes to us with a unanimous recommendation from the planning board, it's a very strong statement. And it's hard for anybody to, any of our bodies, to overrule that. So just to say that that's a, their unanimous vote is one that I can't overlook.
Motion carries, four to one to deny. Thank you. Nice job, guys. Let's go into item B. Consider authorizing a request for qualifications for the housing market analysis and strategy study. And we need a commissioner to volunteer to serve on this election committee, should this approve. Do we do that right now, Ron?
I would like to do that.
Okay.
I mean, unless, more than one can too, but anyway.
Okay, when we make the motion, we'll go ahead and include it. Chad Bungler, again, our Assistant Director of Community Development, will present this evening. And we did have a work session on this, and this is the first reading for it.
Thank you, Mayor. So a week or two ago, I guess, you, you, we had a work session, as you mentioned, on the, the overall idea of this housing market analysis and policy strategy study. And then you took a look at the draft request for qualifications. Was asked to bring this back as another, or for further discussion. I don't know if there's any specific topics. When I was reflecting on the last discussion and preparing for this, John, I mean, we didn't talk a whole lot of why the study and why hire a consultant to that. So I'll start here in that we have a significantly large number of folks in our community that live in cost burden housing, and that is a HUD standard. The common rule of thumb is 30% of your annual income goes to housing, the housing cost. And so nearly 43% of all renters in town are cost burden. And then nearly 13% of all homeowners are in that same category. And so that's a fairly high number. I believe once we get over 50% in one of these categories, we are, we bump up into one of HUD's categories and we start receiving a number of different grants because that is a significant thing. That's not a good thing. And so this is one reason why we have proposed this housing study. The other piece here is that 25% of our residents live at or below the poverty line. And both of those numbers together, one can, can make the assumption that, well, that's student housing from K-State, and there's probably a fair, fair logic to that. Although I would suggest that the fact that we have so many students in K-State renting could overshadow some other housing needs that we don't necessarily dive into. And so all that bound together is reasoning for our housing study. I mentioned this last time, that we are proposing to use the word suitable housing as an umbrella term, meaning for all housing in Manhattan, for all residents. So not just student housing, not just affordable housing, although those all play elements. But our proposal here is the full gamut of housing, from homeowners to renters, low to moderate income, all the way up to the, to the top of the market, so that we can have a solid understanding of what our housing market is and help us develop solid policies and projects for that. So just kind of some brief topics of why suitable housing is so important for our community. I think first and foremost is that housing is obviously a basic need. If you don't have housing, you don't, everything else falls apart around you. And so having that stable, suitable element in our lives is important for our community members. So that is first and foremost. From there, and I, the chamber, Kristi Rodriguez from Chamber and Region Reimagine Program spoke on this the last time, is that housing is an essential element to our economic growth in Manhattan. Businesses are savvy enough that they go to communities where their employees can live comfortably. If you think about it at its core, if... If you think about it at its core, if business has to, businesses are gonna be reluctant to come to a community where they have to spend, pay their employees more because the housing is more and the cost of living is more. Not that I think we need to rock, provide Rock Barlam housing for everybody, but it is a central element to grow our business community. It's also good for sales. Imagine if the, if we had suitable housing where that, those numbers of folks that live in that cost burden category drops, how much more dollars they would have left in their pocket at the end of the month to go spend on goods and services in Manhattan that they may not necessarily be able to because they're paying over 30% of their, their paycheck to a, to housing. And then factoring in the good for our Fort Riley soldiers and their families, as well as the growth of K-State and the growth of research talent coming to K-State. I have a son that's freshman, and so we're beginning to explore the idea of him going to college, and that's not a cheap idea, and housing just plays into that. So if I have to decide K-State, where we love, and Manhattan, where we love, and I don't want him to live in my house anymore, and, you know, paying housing that may be expensive compared to some other community, we may very well take a serious look at that other community, at that other college, even though we do love K-State. And so those are factors for our economic development. Community growth, this paired with our comprehensive plan and paired with the annexation study that we're doing for the Green Valley area, is going to give us a wealth of information and that we will know what our growth population, our growth projection will be, as well as what our expenses are for that growth, so that we can create a sound, sound policies for that. So this is a wild example. This isn't bound in any sort of truth or, or facts. But let's say that we know we need to build 500 new homes in the next five years to meet our growth potential for Manhattan. And if we anticipate we're gonna do that on the edge of the city, then we should create policies to implement that. But if, if the projections say that, that outward growth is not appropriate, suitable for Manhattan, maybe we create policies to do the opposite of that, and whatever those policies may be. So we have the opportunity to create real good growth policy, both for our infrastructure as well as our taxation policies. The, the utility needs go hand in hand with that, so creating upsizing or constructing utilities for apartments are vastly different than the cost for single-family subdivision, and depending on where they are in town. So those are important elements to consider. And that also goes then in hand in hand with the demographics. So the two largest population sectors in the housing market today are millennials and baby boomers, and they're gonna continue to that, and they have similar as well as different housing needs. And so being able to understand that and then project what, how we will meet those needs are important for, for our community. And then lastly, I don't have a fact, I don't have a pithy quote, but not so long ago, there were specific policies, policies in place all across this country, specifically against community unity and equity, should be equity, not unity. And I'm not saying today that is in place, but we would be remiss if this housing study didn't at least dive into that topic to make sure that there are no policies going to, against creating an equitable housing market in Manhattan. So why have the study? Why hire a consultant to do it? I have amazing folks in, on my staff and in City Hall, but having an expert do this for us will pay dividends. Manhattan is definitely a unique housing market with our high percent of rentals, and so having someone that has that expertise will be important for us. We'll also be able to have that objectivity to honestly evaluate the information that we can find, and then having that outside perspective. There's no doubt there's amazing folks in this community that if we got in a room, we could hammer through it, but it's not gonna be, not, not come without a whole lot of angst and issues. I can honestly say if someone stood up and said, well, the issue is zoning, and that is why we don't have adequate housing, that very may be true. There may be elements of zoning that is part of the problem, but I know that I will rough, that I will be bristled and contest that. And so having that outside expert to say, well, zoning's part of the problem, and this is part of the problem, and that is part of the problem, will be valuable for us. Like, and I've mentioned, the expertise is important, not only in understanding the numbers, but also facilitating discussion. They have, they will, we will hire, no doubt, an expert in the field that can ask, get to the topic in one or two questions where my staff and our community members may take five or six or seven or 10 questions to drill down to the topic. So that expertise will get us to the, to the point quicker. And then also be able to provide us with best management practices and innovative ideas to meet our needs. All this then is to improve our local policies and regulations. I'll be the first to admit that, that zoning can, can be improved to do a number of these things, and so we'll take that expert to help us point that out, as well as there's a number of partnerships that we can create to implement anything that we need to. And I also think that having this detailed market analysis will help developers. Naturally, the free market is going to the, the easiest solution or the, the most beneficial solution, but if they only know one housing product, they only know one thing that the bank is giving money to, they're gonna do that. But if this housing analysis can say, here is an untapped potential, and you can make money at it, and it's not that hard, that should be valuable to our development community. So I think there's some advantage there. I could run back through the, the various slides that I had from the last go around, and if it's okay with you, I'll jump through these of the different elements and the purpose. This one topic, I believe Commissioner Morris sent an email about the budget, the, or the funding. The project budget is $95,000. That is just the budget. Our last couple of planning projects that we've done in the community development department have come several thousand dollars under that project budget, and those payments will be for actual cost and services. So just because we have budgeted 95,000 does not mean that that's what the price tag will be. Also, you know, comparing it to what Topeka or Lawrence has done for a housing study, we probably have a little different issues and fairly unique, I would imagine. I don't, too many other cities in Kansas that have our student population, our Fort Riley population, and those all have some different, unique circumstances revolving around it, as well as our land constraints. And so there may be some extra analysis or extra time needing to be spent on it. And then those other communities are a little further down the road in terms of having this, their, their plans that they are underway with or have completed were updates. We haven't seen an update for 20 years, so there's gonna be some extra time and resources spent to facilitate the goals and visioning to create those, because quite frankly, we don't have that in hand to help guide that. And so meetings and facilitation take time, they take money, and that's part of it. Now, I don't expect us to spend every last nickel of that 95,000, but it's what was budgeted at last year's CIP and this year's operating budget, and so that's in the RFQ, but I don't anticipate spending on every bit of it. So we also talked a little bit about public involvement. We'll, in one form or another, create a couple of citizen committees and technical committees to help guide this, and we will rely heavily on public engagement to get the community involved. And then lastly, this is the, the timeline we have. So I hope that answered your question, and this, this general agenda was worthwhile for you, and I'd be happy to answer your questions or take any of your comments.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep.
Questions for Chad?
So somebody had emailed me today and wondered, is this something that a couple of master students up in planning at K-State could, or a PhD student uses their project for significantly less than that, or is that, they proposed the question. What do you answer, what do you have to say about that?
Sure. They're brilliant minds up at K-State for sure. My understanding, because we've asked a question on other topics, is that being their land-grant university, they will not undercut a community, or undercut the private sector to do a project for a community when the community is able to. So part of their land-grant mission is to go into communities that they couldn't, so a smaller community, county that isn't in the ability to afford this. So yes, they could. It will most definitely take longer or not be as comprehensive. You know, those students are only in a class for six months, so will we save money? No. It will take longer to do, and so it's an option, but probably wouldn't be our first option. We'd much rather have an experienced consultant that could come in and do it in our, our needed timeline.
The next question becomes if, if we, we, why don't we just start implementing the policies that will solve these problems? We, we know what the problem is, our housing's too expensive. I'm not sure what we're gonna do about it. We could, other than waiving some hookup fees and getting some low-income tax credit housing, which I think is the, is really the only, I can say, the only thing we've ever really done to bring down the price of housing in Manhattan. If we know it's too expensive to build, keep building on the outskirts of town, and we want to move everybody into the center of the city of the town, let's start implementing those policies, let's start incentivizing those plans, and let's just start doing the things that we know the report's gonna tell us. Because, and first of all, I don't know what we're gonna do about bringing, what this report, are we gonna start saying, okay, developers, we need more $400 a month, one-bedroom apartments? Impossible. You can't create those without some kind of subsidy by the government or something, and, and that's not what local government is for, is subsidizing housing, it's to, so I don't, my, my big gripe about this whole process is, what are we gonna actually do with this information? Because you say, we need to build 500 new houses. Well, the city ain't gonna build a damn new house. And so developers may or may not, and, and the thing is, you can, I know you, you talked about the bankers only alone money, and developers only know how to build one thing. Well, let's incentivize them, let's do something to get them to build something different if we know generally that that's what they want, and if, if it comes back and says, we need a gazillion units of low-income housing, so what? What are we gonna do about it?
Sure.
What's the next step? What's, is anybody figuring, okay? I'm not sure how your, how your big housing trust fund works into this equation at all, because I've never had it explained to me, but I don't think that's the solution, because that's gonna require a bunch of money from somebody. But my question really, I guess my point is, can we start implementing the things that we know we wanna try to do, that we think will bring down some, I don't know what we're gonna do to bring down the price, but can we just start implementing and figuring out the incentivizing processes to try to, if, if we think moving people into town is gonna make housing cheaper, let's get started with that. And, but I just don't know what we're gonna do to actually make a big difference. We have a crap pile of data, which is helpful, and we can continue to cite, and you've already gotten lots of, of good data to get us to this point. I guess my, my thing is, is that what's gonna be, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a report at the end? Unless it's got steps of, of what we're actually gonna do with it, and how we're gonna make housing cheaper, or how we're gonna, I just, that's the thing that's, that's the outlying point. It's like, there's a disconnect between getting a bunch of information, actually solving the problem, because I don't think having information solves the problem without that step in between. And if we have an idea what that step in between is, well, let's start, start heading in that direction in the meantime.
I get it. And, and if I may, it, we could certainly, there are, there have been some great ideas, and I support a lot, all of those ideas for the most part, but I don't know to what extent. You know, we could do a neighborhood revitalization program, but generally where? I don't know that. Where would it make the most sense to revitalize a neighborhood? I don't know that. I don't know how much we have to incentivize to revitalize those areas. And so the purpose of the study is to get those numbers. We have a finite set of resources here, right? Be it local, state, or federal dollars, there's just so much money we could throw at this. And so without having the information to precisionally point to, we need these elements of the housing sector to improve, and we need it to improve by this much. Our whole point is, of the study, is not just to have the data. Having crap loaded data, like you said, means nothing. We wanna take that data, figure out where we wanna be at the end of the day, and then have specific action plan to make that vision a reality. And so that's the point here, is not just the data, but to be able, with precision of sorts, be able to say, we know we need this amount of housing, and here are solutions to get that kind of housing in the community. Be it a policy that Manhattan rewrites for benefit districts, or, you know, I, I know this probably is not a, a great topic for, for you, Commissioner, but maybe it isn't, you know, offering some sort of tax abate, abatements or something like that. Who knows? There's a lot of solutions out there. But that's the point, is at the end of the day, we have an action plan that says, we need to do this over a next five-year increment to get here. That's the point of that.
And as long as that action plan is on a $5 million city expense.
Sure.
If there's, if there's, if that includes a bunch of people, private money, and whatever, things like that, and the city filling in a few steps along the way, or making, greasing the rails, I'm all in favor of that kind of stuff, as long as it doesn't boil down to the end of the day, it's like, okay, now we, we need $3 million to implement blank. We, now we need $10 million to implement the bike ped thing. And so I'm afraid that we're gonna, that, that's a classic example of a study that we don't have the money to implement. Here, we'll probably end up with a study, and as long as it doesn't require the city to come up with a, a pile of money.
Right.
I, I would be in favor, I, I would, I could support that idea, I'm just not sure that, that there's gonna be a leap between here and here, and I don't know what that's gonna consist of. And I, I could support some of the stuff, probably, but I just don't want us to get to a point where it's like now, it's, the solution is, is a big city project stepping in to, to, to save the day, and, and if, if that's not the case, then I think we'll, I would be, I would be okay with, with having done it at some point, probably.
Yeah. And the other piece to that is if we know the numbers we think we need to get to, there are plenty of state and federal programs to help us get there. So I don't think at any point this should all be on the backs of, or on the shoulders of Manhattan. We, it gives us that, that information to go and, and get viable federal and state grants and, and programs to help us implement those things. So I, I, that is the point of this whole thing, for sure.
See, I, I was, spent some time, last couple days, read the Topeka housing study, and basically, yep, there's a lot of data there. I sort of agree with Mark, but is it useful data? And that's where my problem is still with this. I would rather see us use local resources and put together that housing advisory board and have them attack it and come up with some plans, and we could implement some policies, but I just don't think we're gonna get much for that $95,000. I mean, that, that's just where I am on that. If we had useful data, okay. And, and the only logical reason for doing this, out of everything on your slides, you mentioned it would help developers. That may be the only one that, you know, sticks out, is okay, maybe some developer can look at that data and say, okay, I'm gonna invest my money and make a difference. But I really don't see the city being able to do too much with it. And, and, and so I'm not, not happy with, with the concept, but what makes it even worse is our funding source. As I mentioned at the work session, we're gonna use water funds to pay for a bunch of this, and, and to me, that's just insanity, because why don't we have affordable housing? Well, one reason is our water bills keep going up. Another reason is our property taxes keep going up. And there's two things right there we could address. And we could start by not using the water funds to fund a housing study, and then that would make things more affordable. Because I know that when you come here to buy a house, I've done it a couple times, you know, having been Army guy. you know, having been an Army guy, came in here, what I always look at, you know, the specials, the property tax, the utilities, the water bill. And you add all that up, and that makes it for me to say, okay, you know, can I afford it? Can I not afford it? And of course, interest rates and things like that all get into it, but there's a list of about five things you look at. And I can't see the city influencing a lot of those. You know, out of those five, you can't do much with the bank interest rate, the cost of a house. But you can influence my property tax, my specials, and my water bill.
Sure.
And we don't have any plans to work on that. We just keep spending money like crazy. Hiring consultants, you know, let's give $95,000 to a consultant to do something that I really think, you know, we had the Housing Forum at K-State, and there were some suggestions there to form this Housing Board. Essentially, the consultant's going to do that anyway. He's going to gather in all the local citizens and gather the information from them. So, why don't we just do it? And use this $95,000 for all the other things we have to fix in the city.
Well, I don't disagree that there's a, perhaps, a overuse of wastewater, water, sewer funds on certain projects, but am I incorrect in thinking that this study, once produced, would essentially touch that infrastructure through sewer collection systems, production capacity plants, wellfields? The need to, when we do redevelopment, the need to assess condition size, age, capacity of existing public lines, the private water infiltration systems? So, these things that we hear so often that, over the last 20 years, we haven't had this housing study, right? And we've had development, we've had housing sprawl, we've had things happen, and we've had complaints and grumblings of people that, why didn't we, why didn't we, all this water ran into my basement? And they blame it on some development somewhere. Is this study going to help assist with any of that analysis?
I mean, part of that is stormwater and those sort of things, but it certainly will help with those elements of sewer projects, water, those kind of things that, you know, we'll be able to have a better grasp of what our growth needs are, where that growth should occur, and then be able to, you know, plan with our utilities accordingly. So, like I said, if we, I'm making things up, obviously, right here, but if the analysis says we need 1,000 more apartments, we need to, one, figure out where those are, and then we can then model in the cost of what it is to put that infrastructure. Because that infrastructure's vastly different from 1,000 single-family homes to 1,000 apartment units. And so, we'll be able, you know, that, I don't, the finance director and management dictated where this funding source would come from, so they would have a better idea. But I can make that argument of why those utility enterprise funds are included, in just that we will be able to model what our utility needs to be. Now, there's a whole nother side of that, that I appreciate with the Commissioners, but, you know, there's some argument to that effect.
We'll make our comments in a little bit. Is there any public comment on this, on the housing study?
Thank you Commissioners, for allowing me to be here today. I'm Jason Smith with the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. I had some prepared statements. I'm probably going to go off a little bit based on some of the comments, because Mr. Bunker did talk about some of the statistics. When we did our strategic plan two years ago, housing was cited a number of times as a key hindrance in attracting talent. Young professionals and college students both cited it as a problem in the community. Some of the data didn't match the perceptions of some of those folks. In fact, when we heard housing was high, that the actual data showed that our costs were in line with our peers in terms of housing, if you were purchasing housing. However, there was some other perceptions that, well, maybe the housing stock wasn't, you weren't comparing apples to apples. So, now we have not data, and we have more anecdotes. We do know that on the rental, at least at that time, when they were comparing rental, we were about 9% below the US average, which becomes a problem when we try to retain talent, because the average wage in Manhattan is about 23% below the US average. Because of our industry makeup, we have, tend to have more service jobs. I think, and because of that, it was listed as a specific item to do in the strategic plan, which is to conduct a housing study so that we know what the real data is, and not just anecdotes and stories. And I think that's one of the things that we are interested in at the Chamber. I think the other thing, as we talked about, well, is this going to set out new programs? I think we see it a little differently, in that the city spends millions of dollars on an annual basis on water, on sewer, on roads. And it would probably be good information to know where to prioritize the expenditures that are already being made. The Chamber supports the City of Manhattan undertaking a housing study to get real data that can be used by the private and public sectors, to prioritize investments in housing. We also believe the data can be used to substantiate or debunk the perceived reality across multiple community groups. We encourage the Commission to engage stakeholders across the community, including business leaders at the forefront of attracting and retaining talent. We believe the focus should be on suitable housing for all Manhattan residents, and all sectors of affordability to be as welcoming and accommodating as possible. Again, I understand the concerns about, are we just going to get a report of data? But when we have so much conflicting data, we have so many decisions that are being made right now on anecdotes and speculation, we think it's important to have real data. We also think that we're in a process where we're not only trying to attract talent, we are trying to attract capital, so people who will come in and invest in real estate. I think having that data is very helpful for us to attract that capital. Otherwise, I think they'll just go to areas where things move a lot faster, and they can turn their dollar a lot quicker. It's a little harder to invest in smaller communities, and so, I think we have to have as much real information to attract those investors as we can. So, we would encourage you to consider approving this, and are happy to help and assist through that process along the way.
Thank you, Jason. Other public comments? Come on up, Donna.
My name's Donna Shankelman. I live at 1922 Leavenworth Street, and I was involved in a two-year study funded by the Kansas Health Foundation on affordable housing. What I'm most curious about at this stage of our decision-making is the degree to which this proposed study will look at the quality of housing, and its potential for the projected growth in those specific demographics. Specifically, aging population, special needs populations, and as well as students. The reason I focus on qualitative is that, as I hear discussion of quantities of units for projected growth, my first question I ask is, to what extent is that growth people of an age that will probably be living in assisted living? Or will it be people in transition to assisted living who actually can afford larger, more substantial units? And I keep thinking about the preservation, if it is viable, of those post-World War II or those Korean-era houses that would be, could be, quite affordable starter homes for young professionals, if they're willing to do the investing to make it their own, to modernize. And I'm just very eager to hear that such a study, which I would certainly support, to give us the numbers, both in projected growth and where the economy appears to be going, might match the analysis of the kind, the quality, and the size. The size of lots, and their proximity to places of work, as well as the quality of the infrastructure around them. Do we need data? Do we need analysis? I'm a librarian, of course, I'm very information-oriented. And I would also invite whoever gets this study to use the resources of Kansas State University and the expertise that we have there. But I want to hear a lot more about that future projection, and how it dovetails a qualitative analysis of what we have, what we should preserve, and our intentions for different housing populations. The example that I've cited in the past, and I won't go into detail, is what Tompkins County and Ithaca conducted, when they did long-term planning for housing, that looked at the fact that they were a university community, looked at the fact that a lot of people liked to age, and come back to an academic community, that they were surrounded with rural territory, and a lot of people had special needs, and so needed to be in multiplexes with added services. So, I'm just hopeful that we'll get that kind of data as well. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thanks, Donna. Other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Back to sitter, Commissioner comments.
I just want to, I think Jason has hit the nail on the head with this whole thing. With the study that shows that our housing isn't that unaffordable, our wages are just in the toilet. Because in some ream of papers that I've seen over the last six weeks here, there was something that showed that per capita income for Manhattan was like, seven or eight years ago was $43,000, and now, eight years later, the per capita income is like $44,000. And I, is that, did I say that anywhere? Am I making that up? I thought, yeah, there's...
I always saw it somewhere.
That's one of the things that, that's the problem, is that, yeah, the teachers have gotten raises, and the university people get some raises, and the minimum wage probably hasn't gone up that much. So, I'm not sure, there's just, apparently, there's just no mid-middle-class, blue-collar wages that grow on a regular basis, too. And so, yeah, that's the thing, we need to continue to focus on. It's one thing to try to make housing more affordable. I would like to think it's easier to drive wages up a little bit somehow, with some more and better jobs somehow, and that's really the charge that, hopefully, through economic development stuff, and the right region reimagine, and then the Chamber initiatives will get to, because that solves affordable housing, if you get, if you got more money to start with. So, that's just an aside, but that really needs to be a focus, too, of, instead of, raising wages is a more proactive thing than trying to drive down, I think than trying to drive down the housing costs. It'd be easier if we could figure out some way to attract more business and drive wages up. That's the better long-term solution.
I have a question about the upcoming UDO. You're going to start rolling out chapters on proposed standards for subdivisions, rezoning. But at the same time, this housing study is going to be taking place. And it seems to me, timing is important, and information is important. So, if we're rewriting these regulations, how do we... So, one of the, just as an example, would be tiny houses. In the regulations, if we permit them, in the UDO, that will, the end of that will come before the end of this housing study. How do we make that work?
I'll let Eric chime in on that, or Chad, one or the other, but, I mean, I think for the most part, the UDO is combining our zoning regulations and our subdivision regulations to a modern document. So, it's bringing a lot of new concepts as well, and that will certainly be easier to amend if we need to, if there's a housing study that says for housing purposes, it'd really be better if you have these statements. So, I don't think we need to wait on any of that. I think we'll pretty much have the UDO adopted by the time this consultant gets ready to start.
That's what I think, too, which means it's not as flexible for finding answers. Okay. I just, Eric, what do you say?
Well, you really asked two questions. One was timing. The timing slide that Chad had up there, we're doing the RFQ in the near future, but we won't probably have anybody under contract until the summer sometime. We anticipate adopting the UDO in August, September. That doesn't mean we can't add to the UDO at some point if we need to. With regard to tiny houses, we're actually calling them cottages for the UDO purposes, and we already have that concept incorporated in there, so it can be used and implemented if a developer chooses to do that, if the market is there. There's a whole bunch of other tools that are being added to the UDO, more flexible zoning, so people don't have to use PUDs. There's a mixed-use district, a standalone mixed-use district now, as well as what is called master plan neighborhoods, that are, they're kind of a PUD light. They still go to the Planning Board and the Commission to kind of approve a master plan, but they're much more flexible and less confining than a PUD. So, there's a lot of new tools, as Ron said, but from a timing standpoint, yes, we're going to have, well, the UDO right now basically is done in draft form, and we're internally reviewing it with the other departments and beginning to educate them. We'll be coming to you and the Planning Board throughout the spring with work sessions to start educating you on what it says, and what some of the major changes are. Not so much towards method, but to educate you on what it's showing, what major changes were done, and what didn't change. So, I guess, wrapping up kind of what Ron said, we need to get the UDO in place. That doesn't mean it's something that can't be modified if the housing study says there's something missing from the UDO. We don't want to get too far into the housing study if we haven't adopted the UDO. From a priority standpoint of my department, UDO is number one. We need to get that done. We've been working on it too long. Needs to be done, needs to get adopted. Housing study, again, in this process, those first few, the first few bubbles there, the baseline data needs analysis, that's more of the data crunching phase, where there isn't a lot of public input. That's just getting the data and analyzing it. Then, you get into the, where it says significant public input, the goals and the barrier analysis and the possible strategies. That will be occurring probably next fall, at the soonest. So, hopefully, we'll get the UDO done and adopted by the time we get into the public involvement portion of this project.
Does it matter that our land use, our comprehensive plan is older?
Well, the comprehensive plan, you recall, was just updated in 2015, and many of, kind of to address Mark's question earlier on, we've actually been upzoning hundreds of properties since 2005 to create inward growth, as opposed to greenfield, you know, external growth, which creates new, the need for new infrastructure, which is, you know, less cost-effective. If you grow inward, you can have more higher density, more dwelling units per linear feet of infrastructure. A lot of the infrastructure is already existing, although a lot of it needs to be upgraded, because a lot of it is old.
Thank you, I appreciate. I just wanted to get a feel for what that meant. I do have just a couple of comments. I reviewed the tentative... I reviewed the tentative community needs assessment that was online, and we each got, I think I got a copy back, two months ago, maybe, December. And I know that the final one is pending, but it's not released yet, I guess. But the top three quality of life needs cited out of that questionnaire of 845 people was affordable housing. And that was number one. Number two was jobs that pay a living wage, and number three was safe neighborhoods. Under the category, the top three needs for older adults, the top was medical care, and item two and three was affordable housing. I think we have, ever since I've been on the commission now, the fifth year, there has been a steady drumbeat of need to address affordable housing. And I'm looking to this study to do that, to be, and I hope that we write the scope well enough that we get some substantive answers. Our needs are truly different than Topeka. We don't have the vacant and empty buildings, and we don't have some of the problems they have. We have our, probably our own set of problems, but I, I would also say that the, I, I, I think that the concentration of interest on housing in this community over the last year or two is culminating in this study, because the chamber and region reimagine, the housing group that the Wellness Coalition has been, the proposals, the investigations they've been doing into what are some funding mechanisms. So it's, I think it takes us piecing funding together. I don't think there's any one pot of money we can go to and say, bring your $5 million to Manhattan, Kansas. We're going to have to piece things together and make them work. That's what we do with FEMA kinds of projects, that's what we do with other successful grant opportunities. And so I'm interested to see how we can do that in the future, whether it's a housing trust fund or whatever. You know, the options are out there, and everything's possible for us. I also wanted to, here we go. I had some other thoughts. Oh, I want to talk, just mention, too, that even the Flint Hills Regional Council, I serve as a representative of the city of Manhattan on the Flint Hills Regional Council, and they're doing a housing study, but it is a rural housing study out in the seven counties surrounding Manhattan, Fort Riley, and Junction City. So they're working on O'Nega and Council Grove and Alma and these rural communities. So that, when we get, each of us brings a piece of this puzzle together, and when we get finished, we will have a really good picture of the regional housing needs. And you may know, when you drive through some of these small towns surrounding Manhattan, they look like they're kind of hollowed out, there are houses that are empty, they have really unique sets of problems. So together, we can work on this. Instead of each of us working, thinking we're all alone in this and we have to do it by ourselves, there's no one of us that can bring a lot of money, there's no one of us that has the solution, so we have to work together. And that's, as far as I'm concerned, as we go forth, that's where the answer is, in working together. So I am supportive of the housing study and strategy, and I'm willing to support it as the city administration has proposed with a combination of funding sources from economic development and the three enterprise funds. When we get through with this housing study, we will have new lots, new houses, we will be able to hook on new utilities to these, to the things that we develop in this process. And that's how it works. There are always, we always have new additions, new people hooking on to the system that helps pay for it, quite frankly. So that's where I stand right now.
Yeah, Eric.
Can I ask Chad to go back to the suitable definition, suitable housing, slide? And while you find that, I wanted to also just point out that a couple weeks ago, Commissioner Hattasall suggested it was roommates was the answer, and today it was raising my wages. So I, I hope we can be roommates and you can give me a raise. But to be serious about that, I think what we're talking about too often slips into that word affordable. And as we heard earlier about the quality, not just the quantity, and the word suitable here is looking at size, type, quality, price range, and general proximity to your workforce, to your workplace. Are these suitable? Are these for young professionals? Are these for seniors that are now on fixed incomes and need quality housing in a different way? As we look around Manhattan, I think we all kind of, at least I do here, that the, the housing that we have, the housing stock that we have, is, is more geared towards the previous generation's needs and maybe not so much as the current or the next generation's needs. And so this is an important part of that process, of gaining the tools, the data, to make sure that we're in the right place, we're heading in the right direction with the, with the city behind it, with a vision. It's, it's ridiculous to me that we haven't done this in 20 years. I think that's really the part that we're missing in this conversation of how can we penny pinch and save a few dollars off of another water bill when we haven't done this for 20 years? We've saved for 20 years by not doing that, but what have we lost in, in that expense? What are we, what efficiencies have we lost because we haven't made that plan, that strategic plan, for 20 years? So catching up with that, I, I don't want to wait. I don't know why we can't do both, which of the housing advisory board, getting the bones around that, of what this study's going to forecast out for the next 20 years. We all know, Commissioner Hattasall and Commissioner Butler, and we've, we've heard that we can do things, we can tap into K-State, we can tap into that low-hanging fruit and the revitalization, bringing those resources to the table in the next six months or so, when, when this consultant's coming on board and tapping into the community. There's no reason to wait and not do both, as developing the board now, we've already waited 20 years, why, why wait another day? But I support this, I support the way it's funded. I think that it's, it's very important to note that there's, the, the chamber is supporting this, young professionals supporting this, people that have been involved with K-State are supporting this, and there's a lot of people that can't be in this room today that I think would be supportive of this definition of what we're trying to do to help not just what we want to try to pigeonhole as affordable or student. It's actually everybody's housing, and this is looking at housing for our community for the first time in 20 years. So that is a, that's my rant for the night.
Yeah, so I'm glad we had our first reading. It was originally on the consent agenda, imagine that, we would have done it to be done in two minutes, but no, it's on general. You know, I, I'm not sure, from everybody we've heard even tonight and at our work session, we have to recognize what the problem is, because everybody keeps telling us that we have a housing problem. And that's what this housing study's going to do. And I do agree about salaries. Unfortunately, as city commissioners, we don't have control over that, as do businesses and other economic structures that are in place. But those do go hand in hand. And I think when we look at affordable housing, suitable housing, the housing study, the steering committee is going to be a big portion of this. So having individuals from our community participate in this that have knowledge from their fields and in their life experiences will guide us to what we need for the city of Manhattan. I am a strong supporter of the housing study. That's how we got through even the recreation centers, which we're going to be talking about, that are with the middle schools right now. Those happened after many, many discussions. And at that time, I remember Gail Urban bringing four or five packets of studies and things that we haven't done. So it takes us a while to get there for some of them, but it's typically what's in the best interest of their community. And let's move forward and see what we need to do. We have a problem, a housing problem, and we have to figure out what exactly that problem is, because we ourselves are not, are having a hard time defining that problem. And that's going to be critical with the housing study. What is the problem? And then maybe we already have solutions that we can work with. So we don't have to redo everything, but we do need to define the problem. And once we do that, we'll work through with the solutions, because what, at the end of the day, we want people that live in Manhattan to be able to live in Manhattan and enjoy it, and not have to suffer, especially if it's an aging community or individuals on fixed incomes or students. And we want it to be a place where parents want to drop their students off to go to a university and enjoy the apartments that we have. So with that said, do we have a motion?
I hate to be so disagreeable. The, I'm, I like the idea of, of investment coming into the community to solve the problems that we have. It really grinds my gears, the foreign, not the foreign investment, the out-of-town investment that built the 300-unit Lynx property north of Marlaat. They came in, skimmed the cream right off the top of the housing market, created 300 empty rental properties around campus and in the community, of which we have not recovered even close to that. And so I'm all in favor if we can get some out-of-town investment to solve our problems of pre-elderly housing or so. I know it's costing my mom $4,300 bucks a month to live in assisted living, and that's just not viable for majority of, of the people that get to that point and need some help. And so that's, that's the kind of thing that I hope that if they're, Donna, if they're going to be able to address some of the aging housing issues also, because I think, yeah, I don't know, and I don't know how you bring down the cost of housing when you have to provide services, but some entrepreneur ought to get on that and figure that out, because there ought to be a way to make that work out for, for both, both ends of that.
And I agree with you, Mark. I think that's one of the things we want to look at. I think some of the places may have, maybe some of the developers have oversaturated some of Manhattan with high-end priced housing as opposed to just ranch and two- or three-bedroom housing. And that's what we want to know, get a clear idea. And when I heard at the leaders retreat, one of the demographics I heard was the seniors that were, that was the increase in population at that end. So those are the discussions we need to be having. And though we can't stop developers from out of city or out of town or out of state that want to develop here, we can only have so much control as far as zoning. We can't stop them from coming. People say, don't you have too many hotels? Do you need another hotel? We don't have a say on the hotel so much as the zoning component of it. So with that said, is there a motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion, but I'd like to add that we authorize up to $95,000. Is that, okay. So I move to authorize city administration to solicit professional services for the housing market analysis and policy strategy study through the RFQ, which is a request for qualifications process, and appoint Commissioner Morse to serve on the selection committee.
There's a second?
Second.
Please call the roll. Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
No.
Commissioner Esterbrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yeah, no, primarily because I don't like the funding. I might be considered to, you know, follow the, the housing study if we did it all through economic development, but as long as we're going to make things less affordable by spending water funds, no.
Motion carries three to two.
Next general agenda item is the middle school recreation centers, and Jason Hilders is our deputy city manager who's going to be presenting this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we have three action items this evening. A lot of this is precipitated from a real estate transfer agreement we entered into with the Board of Education in 2017. That real estate transfer agreement had us basically transferring the property before the construction. In order to do that, we feel like we need to plat the property, and plating that property would be a lot easier for everybody after it's constructed. So we developed a real estate transfer agreement amendment that'll allow us to start construction, give us rights to come on their property, and then we agreed basically to plat the property and transfer it once we are done. In reviewing the real estate transfer agreement, we also realized both the Board of Education and the city commission needed to approve the final design and specifications, which are attached in your packet this evening. And then the third thing this evening is a change order, basically an additional $256,000 worth of expenses that we've incurred in reviewing the site. This has really been generated from city staff, code, and a variety of perspectives. We have additional sidewalks, we have a fire lane that's on the backside of the property that comes up to the backside of both recreation centers, just a number of improvements that we'd like to see made to the site to make it more accessible and safe. We can get into greater amount of detail if you'd like, but that change order itself is 256 grand. It generates a GMP of about 17.2 million. I can scroll down to McCown-Gordon's summary of that. There are design specs for the buildings, if you'd like to look at them, that are really the same as you all approved with the GMP last year. And again, the Board of Education has looked at those and concurred with those. The increases are highlighted here in the change order. There is a chart, and I'll try to blow up so everybody can read it, in terms of the increases. A lot of the things that we're dealing with took place at both facilities. So when we recognized we don't have trash enclosures at one, we got to do it at both. When we recognized we needed additional sidewalks for the connectivity around the site, we obviously needed to do it for both. Parking lot and the light, lighting in the parking lots, some redesign fees, really pretty traditional stuff. And, and again, on a $17 million project for us to come back. The positive side to the bidding process that McCown went through, what they showed us in schematic drawings and budgeted, they came in within budget when they went out for bid. These are all additions to what they had. These were not identified in the schematic drawings, but were realized really in the last four to six months of review. So these, these are important, we believe, to the completion of the project, and we're coming to you this evening again with that $256,000 change order. There are adequate revenues available to pay for these. We have $150,000 coming from the school district based on the grading plan that we're jointly funding. So the net bogey here is about $106,000. We have already generated over $106,000 in excess of what we projected from a revenue stream for the sales tax for the middle school. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know McCown-Gordon's here this evening, too, if you have some more details you'd like to know on the change order.
Thanks, Jason. Questions for Jason?
Every major construction has changes, and I'm interested in the bottom line financially and about, as we have these change orders, you're looking at the total amount of money that is generated by the sales tax to pay for these, so that no additional city money is needed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you have some boundaries there with what, everybody, everybody has a boundary about what is possible, what can happen in the future. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be reassured.
And so as the money's collected, are they, you said there's room in, to absorb this extra cost. As we're going along, is some money being set aside for the other projects, too? So that's still going to be accumulating off to the side, and there's still extra money that was assigned to go to this available still, too?
Yeah, let, let me break that down for you, Mark. So there's 2.75 million a year that we're generating. Over 10 years, that's 27.5. Over 10 years, that's 27.5. 24 and a half of that or 25 and a half of that is dedicated to these two facilities, basically at 17 million, eight and a half per, and then another eight and a half assigned to CECO renovation. There's 2 million for trails. And that rounds out your 27.5. So, we forecasted 2.75. In the first year, we were over 3 million in revenue. And we anticipate, and based on sales tax that are being generated, we were very conservative in our estimates. We absolutely had... We had zero percent inflation for that 10-year period. And we've already realized even a percent or two. So, that's helped, and that will continue to help. But this pay-as-you-go process is a matter of accumulating revenue, issuing temp notes, and never issuing permanent debt for any of this. So, the temp notes will give us the cash that'll take to go ahead and pay for these things. But we've been accumulating revenue. We'll delay that temp note issuance as long as we can, run that project in the red, issue the temp notes, pay off the full amount, and then start accumulating revenue again.
Thanks, Jason.
You bet.
Anything from the Gallin Gordon here? Any comments? You're just waiting us to ask you questions? Less is more. Any other questions for anybody here? Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the design and specifications for the middle school recreation facilities and approve and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to real estate transfer agreement, change order number one, resulting in a net increase in the amount of $256,396 to the contract with McCown-Gordon Construction of Manhattan for the middle school recreation centers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Brenda?
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Esterbrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.